Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call roll.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Trachet?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
I move for approval of the Journal in a meeting of August 22nd, 2017.
Exact. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Journal's approved. We have no bid opening tonight, so we'll move to communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so we'll move to road and bridge matters. Under road and bridge matters, item number one, Second District.
Receive file and the streets be accepted for maintenance as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Item number two, Second District.
Receive file, plan, specifications, and detailed estimate of costs be approved, and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids, pending authorization from the Federal Highway Administration as requested, and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Moving on to other communications, Mr. Chair. Item number one.
Receive file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Sixth District.
Receive file, and the change of management order be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Item number three, Sixth District.
Receive and file, please.
So ordered.
Item number four.
Receive file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. That will be the order.
Item number five.
Receive file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. That will be the order. I would just like to say that this is an important piece of legislation that we've been waiting on, I think, at least since 2013 or 2014, to allow our folks that need permits for building in St. Louis County to do those permits online, and we're glad to see it moving through the process.
Item number six, Fifth District.
Receive file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number seven, Seventh District.
Receive and file, and the County Council be directed to draft appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number eight, Second District.
Receive and file, and refer to the County Executive, and that will be the order.
Item number nine, Seventh District.
Receive and file, and the County Council be directed to draft appropriate legislation.
So ordered, and this bill will be referred to Committee of the whole.
Yes, sir. Item number 10, Second District.
Receive file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Please read the add-ons.
Item number one, Third District.
Receive file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, please.
So ordered. Report to the County Executive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to say a few words this evening, particularly about what I believe many are gathered here tonight to discuss and probably to hear about. The Legacy Ice Center in Creve Court Park. The county has a Department of Parks and Recreation. The Legacy Ice Center is a recreation facility. I've reviewed this matter, I've gone through numerous documents, looked through public hearings that have been held on this matter, and the facts related to this matter are as follows. The Chair of the County Council, Dr. Sam Page, to my left, sponsored the bill authorizing this facility, and the legislation moved through the council in a normal process that was approved unanimously. From the very beginning, this process has been open and transparent with no less than four public hearings. Several opportunities for public comment, including one public hearing where a public comment was welcome and was the focus of such a hearing. And we welcome those opportunities, and we welcome hearing from you this evening. In fact, some of you here tonight spoke both for and some against the proposition at that public hearing. After approval, the Legacy Ice Foundation and the St. Louis Economic Development Partnership moved forward in an appropriate manner and received all of the proper permits for the grading work, including concurrence from the State Department of Natural Resources. These parties have been transparent about the fact that grading work will benefit the park as a whole, but will also benefit the ice rink if built. If the project does not move forward as contained in the entry agreement, the grading work that has been done can be returned to its original state. The site was originally planned to be 40 acres, which is less than 2% of the park's area, and it remains 40 acres, as was designated in the initial documents. Along the way, many different officials with the Legacy Ice Foundation and the St. Louis Economic Development Partnership have made themselves available to answer any questions of members of the council or the public where those individuals have had questions about the ice center. The council members who voted unanimously in favor of this Legacy Ice Center had many opportunities to review this proposal's details and to discuss those details with the principals involved. That some of them, including Chairman Page, would now claim to have been misled about the project or to have not understood what they were voting on is preposterous. It moved through the council over a three- or four-week period. This is a public facility. It was moved forward by the Chairman of the St. Louis County Council. The vast majority of the ice time will be dedicated to use by county residents for youth hockey activities and open skating. Let's remember that the Legacy Ice Center would be the fourth ice facility installed in a county park, and we have numerous ice facilities throughout the county within our incorporated areas. Finally, I would like to note that the most high-profile ice rink in the metro area also happens to be in a park, and that rink is Steinberg, and it's in Forest Park. Thank you.
So, we will have to control the applause during the discussion today. We have folks on both sides of this question, and we have a lot of speakers, and it's only fair to the people who are speaking if they aren't interrupted by applause, or boos, or other comments from the audience. We ask that when you do speak, you address your comments to the Chair and be considerate of everyone in the room. I know we have at least 70-some speakers tonight, we'll give everyone a chance to speak for at least three minutes. But I do have a question for the County Executive, and my question is, do you believe that a public hearing prior to a council vote would have been appropriate?
That's an easy question to answer, and we had two hearings prior to votes, and you were the proponent of the bill, who moved the bill forward and convinced your fellow council members to vote for the bill. So if you wanted it held for a public hearing, for an additional public hearing, in addition to the public hearings that were held, you were free to do that.
Well, I, it is a mistake.
But I know the dog ate your homework, and the sun was in your eyes, so you have a hard time. Hey, look, we have to take ownership of what we've done. You voted for it, you were the proponent of it, and the council approved it unanimously. Who are you trying to fool here?
Mr. County Executive?
Who are you trying to fool?
There were no hearings.
Mr. Chairman. There were hearings. You had a public vote two times. You had a public vote two times and offered speakers the opportunity to speak.
Do you think it is appropriate to disclose the restricted use of the land?
Absolutely.
Prior to the vote.
As it was, as everything else was disclosed.
Okay.
Yes, okay.
So...
And you were fooled again. I guess you were fooled again, just like you were fooled four other times this year. You were fooled about the auditor. You were fooled.
Mr. Chairman, no one's a greater proponent of spirited debate than I, but I would ask that the debate be focused on the issues and not on personal attacks. It's beneath this body to go there.
Well, we set an example for everyone by our decorum on the dais. We certainly do, and I appreciate those comments. I would hope that everyone here speaking tonight would keep their comments to, comments that they would be proud of if their kids or their parents were watching them tonight, because this is an emotional issue for a lot of people, and I do believe strongly that both sides need to be heard, and I am disappointed that we did not have an open discussion of this prior to our council vote.
Even though you moved it?
Yes.
Even though you moved the process?
Yes, absolutely.
Really? And so was it a mistake of yours to have had that? Because you would have been the first responsible for having that public hearing?
Of this, in full state.
Oh, you were not a proponent of this.
I supported it, I voted for it.
You voted for it.
And I own that vote, but I did not bring that to this council. I did not lobby my peers to vote for this.
You most certainly did.
I voted for it.
You most certainly did.
Mr. Chairman.
You are misremembering.
There's a question on the floor.
You most certainly did.
I asked to be ready.
Well, who voted your vote? Did you vote your vote?
I think this is unproductive, and we need to move on with the meeting, please, so people can be heard on the issue.
Well, certainly the Chairman is responsible for controlling the decorum of the date, and I accept that responsibility. It's certainly difficult if the County Executive wants to get into an insult contest. I, that's not something I would compete for.
I didn't hear a single insult, I was pointing to the record.
I will not compete for that.
I was pointing to the record. Well, then, that's great. I won't engage you then.
Yes.
Yes.
So, let's move forward with testimony from the public. We do hope to hear from everyone today. We do hope to have more hearings on this subject, at least one tomorrow, and we have a lot to learn. There's a lot that's transpired since December of 2016. Madam Clerk, would you call the first person?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I may, we have 104 speakers this evening, so I will, as we do when we have this volume of speakers, I will call the speaker and then also the person who will be after them, so that person can be prepared. Also, some of the speakers are out in the foyer, so the officers are going to assist me with calling those people in.
Great. So our rules allow for everyone to speak for three minutes. I'm, certainly will honor that unless there's a motion from the dais to limit debate. I think we should let everybody speak. Yes?
Mr. Chair, could I also add that maybe we could have people line up instead of, and just call names, so it's even quicker?
Would you like me to call five at a time, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Why don't we stay two ahead? Two names ahead?
Okay.
Okay, first speaker.
First.
As a matter of business, we didn't do special committees, but it's not that important.
There are no special committees to report, we'll proceed with public forum. Thank you, Councilmember.
Sorry.
Correction of the agenda.
First speaker this evening is Greg Smith, followed by George Stock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I am Greg Smith, I'm the attorney for the Legacy Ice Center, and I'm here this evening to correct the misinformation that has been circulated in the media and elsewhere that suggests that this project was not fully explained and fully disclosed in the legislation that unanimously you passed in December of 2016. That ordinance, 26621, I'm holding it in my hand, it has attached to it an eight-page memorandum of understanding. That eight-page memorandum of understanding details the project quite specifically. It recites that it is going to be a four-sheet ice center, three indoor sheets, one outdoor. It talks about it as being located, of course, in St. Louis County Park, Creve Court Park. It specifically recites that it will be provided through a lease structure that involves the IDA. In fact, the entire lease structure is discussed in this exhibit. It actually provides a mechanism, at the time that this was approved, it actually provides a mechanism that anticipates that the facility will expand and that there will be a different type of bonding test to determine whether or not the very limited obligation of the county, the $450,000 a year that is a backup, will not at any time be increased. So notwithstanding the fact that this project has stayed on the same footprint, actually slightly smaller, and although it was stated to be a 220,000 square feet facility, foot facility, and will be a two, now a 250,000 square foot facility, it's not a material increase, and the biggest difference is that, as was described in the exhibit, the allowance for a 3,500-seat arena was to be potentially added. All of this is contained in the exhibit, you can read it. Most importantly, and the point I want to make most emphatically, it specifically detailed the approvals that would be required as a condition for this to go forward, and those included the approval by the National Park Service. It is specifically recited. Since that time, we have been engaged in that process, and I'm mostly here tonight to encourage you not to adopt the proposed resolution that has been introduced by Councilman Page, which would direct or request that the National Park Service and its local administrator, the Department of Natural Resources, cease in processing our application. It's unfair, it would be counter to the time and effort that so many of the people that have been involved in this process have put into this, and the millions of dollars that has gone into the development, the site design, and so forth. I'm going to let George Stock address the grading issue, I was going to address that, but I'll, in the interest of time, try not to duplicate. So, you all voted in favor of this, and all I can say in the brief time I have available, it was fully explained in the ordinance, in great detail.
That's the minutes, Mr. Chair.
And I encourage you not to renig on the commitment that you made to the people standing behind me and to citizens of St. Louis County, believe that our parks are not just for passive recreation, but include the opportunity for this type of important recreation as well.
Greg, we need you to close.
Thank you.
I just have one question. Can you explain to me why the site preparation was started without National Park Service approval? That's what a lot of us have been wondering.
I can. This property was purchased under Section 6F of the Land and Water Conservation Act because there was a dual purpose that was, as Mr. Stock will explain, explained in every single communication with every single permitting agency involved, whether that would have been Corps of Engineers, the Levy District, the Department of Natural Resources, because this grading would also take a site that historically was subject to flooding, didn't have any but passive recreational opportunities, and would raise the site, okay, provide for proper drainage, actually provide, borrow, fill for the Green Rivers Trailway improvements that are taking place on the immediate southern perimeter of the site, take that trail out of the floodplain. Because there was a dual purpose, and there was only preliminary grading, no footings, no foundations of any kind, and $1.2 million was posted as an escrow to secure the proper finished grading of the site, grassing, whatever, if the project did not proceed. Because of all of those conditions, the Department of Natural Resources confirmed what we believed, which was that there was no need for any further approvals. And by the way, that's fully explained in the communication from the partnership and confirmed in the communication from the Department of Natural Resources.
And I appreciate that answer. Who paid for the grading work?
The Legacy Ice Center has paid for all of it.
Did you see that as a risk to make the grading work without the approval? How would you recover your funds?
No, it was absolutely at the risk of the Legacy Ice Center and the project.
But how would you recover the funding for that grading if you didn't get Park Service approval?
We will not.
You've lost it.
We will have lost it.
So you must be confident that you'll get Park Service approval.
We are, we absolutely are. And just on that point, now, the issue there is whether or not this is truly a public facility. Over 95% of the use of this facility will be by the people that you see sitting behind me. The other piece of misinformation is that the very small component of this project, which is the Blues Practice Facility, less than 6% of the space and way less than that in terms of ice usage. The misperception that this is the predominant use of the site and on this facility, that is not the case. It will be for youth amateur ice skating, both figure skating, speed skating, and of course amateur hockey.
Thank you, Greg. We'll have time to talk some more tomorrow.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
Mr. Smith, how large was the facility you're talking about? How many square feet?
220,000 square feet was recited in the attachment.
It's now 250?
It's now 250.
And how much of that, 250,000 square feet facility, would you categorize as exclusive to indoor use?
There's one outdoor ice sheet, and of course, there will be an outdoor recreational field. I couldn't tell you the exact numbers, perhaps. One of the speakers that follows me, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to misstate it.
That's fine. Well, would you agree with me that whatever portion is indoors certainly wouldn't qualify as outdoor recreation?
Well, actually, that's a term of art that is used under Section 6F of the Land and Water Conservation Act, actually describes a public facility as including indoor uses as long as they are public in nature and of this type of recreational use. So as you know, so I mean, in answering your question, if you're asking me, will it be a public facility and will it be an exception under the Land and Water Conservation, Section 6F of the Land and Water Conservation Act, the answer to that is yes. I'm not going to be so foolish as to tell you that something that is enclosed is an outdoor activity, as we use that term in everyday usage.
And then finally, this expense that the Legacy undertook for the grading, I believe you said that they undertook the risk and understand that if they don't get approval, they're prepared to lose that.
That is correct, sir.
So then, would you agree with me or not that that amount of money, whatever it is, cannot later be claimed as some sort of damage if this project doesn't go forward?
Well, I guess that would depend upon what action you are seeking redress for. So it certainly could be damages if there were a breach, for instance, of the memorandum of understanding that we have, and it would certainly be the basis for our damage claims, yes.
So on the one hand, Legacy is prepared to risk the money and not recover it at all if approval's not achieved, but on the other hand, if for whatever reasons this project is stymied or doesn't go forward, they're going to claim that it is a loss to them?
No, sir. That is not correct. Let me clarify. You asked me if it could be a component of damage in a particular type of legal action. My answer to that is yes, it could be. There is no intention on the part of the Legacy Ice Center to claim, as things are proceeding currently, that we are damaged in any way if we do not obtain National Park Service approval in the normal course of events. That's a risk we take.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just one quick question. Thank you for coming, by the way, I appreciate it. Under the license agreement that the county entered into with Legacy, is there a condition in there that if the 6F approval is not given, that the land would be restored? Now, I know it won't be restored to exactly what it was, but with regard to planting trees and things of that nature, is that stipulated in the agreement or that the county has the discretion to require that?
Well, the agreement you're referring to is actually called the Right of Entry Agreement, and yes, and not only that, not only is your statement about what we must do if we are not approved by the National Park Service correct, but as I mentioned, there's a one, I believe it's actually, I think I misstated it, I think it's a $1.4 million escrow that was posted and that will be securing the post nonapproval event work that we're obligated to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Next speaker is George Stock, followed by Joe Bova Conti.
Good evening, County Executive, Chairman, members of the council. My name's George Stock, and with Stock and Associates Consulting Engineers was my firm that had the responsibility for the Legacy Ice Center to develop the grading and the drainage plans that had been implemented. My understanding is there may be some misunderstandings relative to the permitting and the processing of those drawings, but first of all, to kind of follow up on Mr. Smith's comments, this particular 35.7 acres of ground was somewhat unique to many other properties within the Creve Court Park. It was unique in the sense that it had no effective drainage. It basically flooded, it had no connection to Lewisell Creek, it had no connection to the Creve Court Creek. Through the grading design and drainage design, we proposed to move 113,000 yards of material in a very responsible manner, such that we could elevate the site above the 100-year floodplain elevations, and also provide a betterment to the overall lake area district. So within the Howard Bend Levy District, there's an interconnected stormwater pond model, and through this grading and the additional 1.6 million cubic feet of storage, we've actually lowered the 100-year water elevations in multiple properties adjacent to this. Relative to the permitting process that we followed, with the City of Maryland Heights, the grading permit and drainage submittal was made on 4/17/17. A written approval to mobilize and stall the stormwater pollution prevention was issued on 7/5/17. The floodplain development permit was received from the City of Maryland Heights on 7/5/17, and they issued a grading permit on 7/6/17. Relative to the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, we received our land disturbance permit and our operating permit to discharge stormwater on June 9th, 2017. Relative to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, we received a letter from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers on May 15th, 2017, that no 404 permit would be required. The Howard Bend Levy District issued their approval to commence grading and drainage work on March 28th, 2017. The Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District provided a written release for grading permit on June 7th, 2017, and St. Louis County issued a right of access letter from Marine Avenue on July 7th, 2017, and also issued a special use permit for grading on July 13th, 2017. So hopefully that clears up any questions relative to the permitting and the processing of the drawings that our office prepared. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and for the record, here are all those permits.
I'll take that, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joe Bova Conti, followed by Charles Bell.
Well, good evening, everybody. I won't bore you because I'm not a engineer, I'm not a land guy, I really don't even have a big dog in the fight, and I see the issue from both sides. I really struggle with this, but I'm a hockey guy. So 21 years ago, I took the first girls' team in St. Louis. Nobody else would take any girls. I was the only one to do it, and we grew from there. So 21 years later, girls' hockey in St. Louis has grown over 200%. We need a place for these kids to play. So a little bit about my background. I'm a retired detective sergeant from Maryland Heights. So I was in Maryland Heights when they built the Page Extension. I was in Maryland Heights when they put in Soccer Park. I was in Maryland Heights for over 25 years. And so, in my job at Maryland Heights, I was also in charge of crimes against children and juvenile. In 300 cases a year that we handled in our department just involving juveniles, you could trace most of it back to kids not having any place to go, not having anywhere that they could be together with their friends and family that was safe, that was good for them, and that's why we need something like this. It's so difficult today, in today's world, for kids to find a place where they can be validated, and to go into a facility like this in a major park like Creve Court Park, on the west side of the lake, and nothing's ever went on on the west side of the lakes as all the years I was a policeman there. I think it does nothing but help us as a community, help our community grow. Every park that I've been in throughout the United States, traveling as a hockey team, and also even in Europe, we've had some beautiful, beautiful ice rinks in the middle of parks, and those ice rinks did a whole lot to bring people in together. When they built the boat ramps in Creve Court Park, and Washington University started with their rowing program, as a policeman, I started seeing more and more people coming to the park. When we got Soccer Park built, we had more and more people coming to the park, and then Maryland Heights put in that beautiful bike trail and that nature trail to walk on. Nothing was ever disturbed by it, but people used the park, and I think in the wintertime, when the park is in its least, I guess it's being used less in the winter than any other time, I think an ice facility where kids and families can go is very important, and I think it means a lot to build the community, it means a lot to... And I think it means a lot to build the community, it means a lot to build our hockey programs, it means so much for the kids in our community who don't have a whole lot of recreational activities that they can partake in. And this place would provide it for figure skaters, speed skaters, hockey, broom ball, curling. I mean, it just goes on and on. So as I struggled with this, knowing both sides of the equation, and I understand that, I thought, what's in the best interest of the kids? And I always used in my career as a police officer, I always made my decision on what's in the best interest of kids, and I think this is in the best interest of kids.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Charles Bell, followed by Isora Liggins.
I'm Charles Bell. I'm an architect in Clayton. I live in Webster Groves. I represent the American Institute of Architects, the Open Space Council, the Missouri Coalition for the Environment, Sierra Club, Greenway Network, St. Louis Audubon Society, U.S. Green Building Council, and 17,000 petition signatures. We object to slamming a 40-acre, 11-million cubic foot special interest development on a pristine public lakefront. This is a special interest indoor building complex in a floodplain, a flood zone, and in a floodway. This is in direct violation of the Land and Water Conservation Funds of the National Park Service. This development would remove parkland, destroy open space and vistas, and contributes nothing to this unique outdoor environment. Extensive traffic congestion will eventually cause the park users to go elsewhere. Boating, biking, birding, sailing, and picnicking would be severely compromised forever by this single dominant and introverted use. And yes, the rendering of the token outdoor skating rink on the blind side of the building is pretty, but what park enthusiasts will actually see, and excuse my architectural French here, the butt end of the building with loading zone trash and utilities towering 65 feet over the lake. The developer was required to execute an environmental assessment, but there are still errors, omissions, and irregularities in their report, and the developer will now be required to correct and supplement their report before they can be forwarded to the National Park Service. Meanwhile, after destroying parkland vegetation and woodlands, scraping and grading the site, Ms. Sweeney from the St. Louis Economic Development Partnership has repeatedly stated to the press and to this council that the site demolition work is only for stormwater management. Yes, information has been incorrect, misleading, and incomplete. Chairman Page, Councilmember Wassinger, we support your resolution to suspend construction, and we believe that we should demand correct information, require the developer to present these issues honestly, and keep the public informed. And most importantly, there are many better sites where this project can be developed by Legacy Ice and St. Louis Blues. Let's put this project where it belongs, in a vacant shopping mall or similar venue, already with parking, infrastructure, utilities, highway access, and public transportation.
Thanks for your minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Isora Liggins, followed by Kelly Chase.
My name is Isora Liggins, 5320 Bermuda Road. I've stood before this council for a year now, and I want to thank everybody who has helped me, but it hasn't been enough. The discrimination that I've been faced with regarding my disability has reigned over 23 years. I thank you for allowing me to get the help, to get these insurance papers from my employer who has taken me seven years to receive. These papers called out for everything that I had been saying for the last 20 years I was entitled to. But because I have been pushing for this, I have been told that I can't take no for an answer. But in Missouri, this is the show-me state. These documents clearly call for what I am entitled to. And this county is against discrimination for disability, for race, and all other things that would protect the human race. So I'm asking Mr. Stanger and the other council members to help me get somebody in the Department of Insurance to step up and enforce these insurance papers, because if these papers were against me, the company would have slammed the door in my face a long time ago. But now, these papers were for me. Me and my family have suffered for many, many years. My husband has problems, health problems, said we need good insurance. We were always working, paying for our bills, doing the right thing. I'm asking this council to use your protection based on discrimination and help my family because we're suffering. And I would appreciate anything you could do, and I would appreciate you doing it as soon as possible because 23 years is long enough. And thank you.
Next speaker is Kelly Chase, followed by Sherry Levy.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I am not from here originally. I came to St. Louis 30 years ago now, and what seemed like just yesterday was part of a community I know nothing about. I've been very fortunate over the years to have grown to what I feel is a part of St. Louis, and I was fortunate enough to play hockey here for a while and still be a part of a great organization that I think has instilled values in me that are carried over into so many different aspects of my life. And so for that, I was taught charity, giving back, being a part of the community. And because of it, I built a home here, stayed here, raised three teenage boys here. One of the things that was instilled in me was the ability to give back. And so for that, whether I was playing here for the Blues or part of our Alumni Association, I felt like, you know, that was an obligation. We often say that it's a privilege to play, but it's also a privilege and an obligation to give back. And for that, we've given back to plenty of organizations, and one of them is our Conservation Parks and Rec. We've always been a part of that, whether it's Wildlife Federation or whatever it is, we've been a part of it. I never tied the two together where I thought it would discriminate against kids and family. Just never thought about it. Been fortunate enough to be a part of the first handicapped hockey program in the United States. It's grown to members all over the nation and North America because of it starting here in a park recreation arena. So the one thing that made me stay in St. Louis was being a part of a community that I was proud of. And I think that if we take a step back and look at what we're doing for children and what we're doing for kids, I think that it starts to be a lot clearer. I see passionate people in the room. I played, I'm a pretty passionate guy when I played, and still have that about me. But being objective, I can tell you that I've seen thousands of kids come through arenas that needed a place. And to object to having a place for them, whether it be in an area where we have to, you know, make it right with the wildlife or any other area, I think you either don't have a passion for family, kids, or you've never had them, because to me, it's tied hand in hand. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Kelly.
Next speaker is Sherry Levy, followed by Brad Whackler.
Good evening. My name is Sherry Levy, and I was born and raised here in St. Louis County. My husband and my two kids and I currently live in Creve Court. Both of my kids wanted to come this evening to show their support for the new ice arena, but they both have hockey practice. My daughter Lexi plays for the AAA Lady Blues U-16 team. Their practices are out in Wentzville, and there are currently multiple teams skating at one time due to the lack of available ice. Currently, more than a third of her team is from out of state. I believe this new facility will encourage more young ladies to try ice hockey as well as all other ice skating sports. I also believe the shortage of available ice in St. Louis deters our youth, all of our youth, from trying the various ice sports. The addition of this new ice rink will allow St. Louis to accommodate and host hockey tournaments as well as competition and tournaments for speed skating and figure skating, all other skating events. It will also benefit our local economy as teams come in from out of town, stay at hotels, eat at our great restaurants. The location of this new facility will also allow families to not only utilize the ice facility, but utilize the entire park, to utilize the trails, the lake. Granted, a lot of hockey is in the winter, but I love Creve Court Park. I love going out there in the winter just as much as in the summer. I know when I drop off my daughter for hockey and it's at a shopping center, I don't have a whole lot to do. But at a park, I can go walk that park. I can go utilize the rest of the facilities. My family and I are excited about this new facility being built at Creve Court Park. I truly believe this is an excellent addition to the Creve Court Park and our community. We can't wait to skate at this new state-of-the-art facility. I believe that you, the county council members, made the right decision in December to move forward with this project. It would be wrong to reverse it now. The facts have been clear and available to all. We shouldn't have do-overs now because of political peer pressure. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thanks, Sherry.
Next speaker is Brad Whackler, followed by Bob Howenstein.
Good afternoon. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of this facility. And I'm the vice president for intercollegiate athletics at Lindenwood University. I've been here now for a year and a half, and please don't hold this against me with a lot of St. Louisans in the room, but I am from Detroit, so I appreciate good hockey. I appreciate the rivalry between St. Louis and Detroit over the years. But one of the things that I feel so passionate about is the game of hockey. And when I got to St. Louis, one of the things that was so intriguing about this job is the fact that they had a hockey team. Not only one hockey team, but they had three hockey teams. We have an NCAA Division One women's hockey team, and then two very highly competitive ACHA men's hockey programs. And Rick Zomba is our head coach, and Rick does an outstanding job with our head program, with our men's program. And so, you know, I have a passion for hockey, and I have a passion to see hockey grow. And I can tell you, from living it and breathing it every day with our facility out in Wentzville, there is a drastic need for ice in this community. Our facility, as soon as the Chesterfield facility closed down, our facility was overscheduled and overbooked, and we didn't even know what to do with it. So, you know, I can truly appreciate the passion behind the sport of hockey. And it's my responsibility for everyone in the room is to help the sport of hockey grow in a hockey-rich region. Not only men's hockey, but women's hockey. We need to see that sport grow. It is a fascinating, fast-paced, exciting brand of hockey, and I love being a part of it. One of the things that I always stress as athletic director is the student athlete experience. So that's for me, very, very important. That's what I'm passionate about, because that's the reason I have a job. If I didn't have any student athletes, I wouldn't know what to do with myself. I would just be sitting in an office. Ultimately, my student athletes are currently driving 35, 40 minutes, one way to get to the facility in Wentzville. So when I was approached with an opportunity to partner on this fantastic, beautiful, new state-of-the-art facility in a much more convenient location, it obviously was something that was incredibly enticing. There is something to be said for us as our student athletes are going to and from, there's a certain safety component. So we are looking for a facility that is much more convenient to our campus. The other piece is that we love to try to get across the river. Okay? It's, when I first got here, I didn't understand it, being from Michigan. I didn't understand the dynamics of the river that separates St. Louis County and St. Charles County. And it's my goal to help break down that border and frankly, get across the river. And it's my goal to get our program, the entire Lindenwood University athletics program, across the river. And I take great pride in what our student athletes can bring to this community and what they can bring to teaching others, young youth, the game of hockey. And it is a fantastic facility, one that I take great pride in, one that I'm proud to represent and be a part of, and I think it would be a great advancement for this community. So thank you very much.
Next speaker is Bob Howenstein, followed by Meg Marion.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak for a minute. My name is Bob Howenstein. I'm president of the Missouri Ice Hockey Officials Association. We currently have 350-plus officials that, working in our organization, covering hockey throughout this St. Louis region. I too lived in Maryland Heights for many years, saw the Page Extension, what we went through trying to stop that and start it, and the political process that went through. But I want to talk about it from the human side. As a father, you know, we, I've seen thousands of young men and women come through our program becoming ice hockey officials. They come to us as kids that have their faces stuck in their cell phones, they play video games, you know, they're introverted kids. By the time we get done working with them and teaching them what it's about to be a referee and an official, they come out with character, they come out with respect for people, they come out with integrity. It's a learning process that they're not going to get if they're not playing a team sport. Watching the kids develop, you know, we have a responsibility as parents and as people that are guardians of this community to have an opportunity for kids to have a place to go. And you see kids starting to play team sports, it changes them. They're not the same individual as somebody that's playing an individual sport. We have a shortage of ice. We have trouble getting ice to train our officials. It's a real problem, and a multi-sheet facility is what we need. The amount of tournaments that we had coming into the Chesterfield facility, there wasn't a ton of traffic coming in and out, but those tournaments pulled people from Chicago, from Kansas City, Indianapolis, Nashville. And where do you think our kids are going to go now? They're going to have to go out of town to play in those tournaments, because we don't have the facilities to host these tournaments. What does that do for us as a community? What is that? It takes away the prestige that we had. When you go to Chicago and you talk to groups of people from USA Hockey, "Oh yeah, you've got St. Louis." You've got five kids went in, were drafted in the first round of the NHL. You guys know how cool that is? That just doesn't happen. We're going to take that prestige away from us if we don't have a facility to have a place for kids to play. So again, I'm very proud of the character of the people that we have come through our program. I know other sporting associations have problems keeping officials. We work really hard at it, but we need ice to be able to maintain our mission. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Meg Marion, followed by Tom Steinbrecker.
I have a great picture that I want to show people, too, of our special hockey team. Can I give it to you over this way? Excellent. Thanks. It's a picture of our special hockey team, the St. Louis Blues Special Team. So I'm here, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all today. I'm here as a mom, and that's really why I'm here. I'm advocating for my child and all sorts of other children who, and adults, who are allowed the opportunity to participate in ice and in hockey. Our family lives in Creve Court Park. We actually live, well, we don't live in Creve Park. We've lived five minutes from Creve Court Park. That would be fun to live there. Excuse me. We really, really enjoy everything about the park. We love the hiking. We like the boating. We like the food trucks when they come down. We actually, on the outside of the park, we enjoy the Gulf Crystal Springs Quarry there, and we are really looking forward to the opportunity for a hockey rink. Our son plays on the St. Louis Blues Special Hockey Team, which is what you're looking at. And some of the athletes, they range from five to 55. So it provides all sorts of people with disabilities the opportunity to get on the ice and compete. It's truly a gift, being able to play hockey and get out there. It allows our athletes the opportunity to excel in the sport. They get to move quickly on the ice and feel free. They get to work on eye-hand coordination. They foster friendships. They stay in really good shape, and they really have a great opportunity, because our coaches are amazing, to develop the character and leadership skills that they need to operate in our typical world. About 99% of our athletes that are on the ice are actually adult-free. And when they're in school, they're not adult-free for our young And when they're in school, they're not adult-free for our younger athletes. So it gives them that opportunity of independence, and it gives them the opportunity of competition. With the reduction of ice rinks in the St. Louis area, our program is already actually experiencing a reduction in the opportunity to get on the ice. So it is affecting our athletes and everything related to special hockey events and benefits from it. So as some other people have shared, as being a citizen, you know, I recognize it's going to increase revenue to the city or to the county, and it'll bring hockey tournaments to St. Louis as well as other ice skating opportunities. This is a great way to showcase our athletes, the Blues Special Hockey Team, and other teams that have special hockey. Our special hockey team is the only one in the state of Missouri. We, my family and I and other people on the team, believe that it's possible for the park and the ice complex to coexist. The rink adds additional features to the park and a benefit to even more citizens of our community. So I'm asking that you uphold your unanimous vote for the rink. And also, and we appreciate that. I guess the last part I'd like to say is that with what Mr. Chase said, or Mr., oh my gosh, I had a brain cramp. I'm sorry, Kelly, yes.
That's three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Can you wrap up?
I can't. I think, you know, the Blues have given our athletes an amazing opportunity, and they've given the community an amazing opportunity to be able to just to be themselves, feel free, excel, and create character and leadership. So thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Tom Steinbrecher, followed by Dennis Witt.
Thank you. I've never played one second of hockey. Now, one person in my family has played one second of hockey. Not a lot of ice facilities in our St. Louis in the '50s and '60s, I think, explains that. But I'm in favor of this rink going through. Because I look at St. Louis, I love St. Louis like everyone else here does, and I want us to be known as a progressive, state-of-the-art community. And the question I have, do we really feel that St. Louis is keeping pace with Kansas City, Chicago? I lived 30 years in Detroit, and my answer to that is no, I really don't think it is. You know, we've shot ourselves in the foot in the city with declining the MLS opportunity, some other things that were not in our control that have happened that have given us a bad national perception. And I think we need facilities like this to really show people around the country what St. Louis is all about. And the question is, is St. Louis County better with this facility or without it? I use Creve Court Park probably more than anyone here. I'm an avid cyclist. I mountain bike up top through the woods in the winter. I'm on the road several times a month on my road bike on the lower part of the park. And I assure you, no one has ever used that 40 acres as a picnic spot. I don't think anyone even recognizes that part as part of the park, so I don't think there's a great loss there. And I think what it adds to the community, both in reality and in perception, is a great addition to St. Louis. So I thank you for the time to speak, and I hope you uphold your decision. Thank you, Tom.
Next speaker is Dennis Witt, followed by John Rannie.
Hello, council members and county exec and honored guests. My name's Dennis Witt. I grew up in St. Louis County before it became Maryland Heights. I remember riding our bikes as kids on the old trolley car tracks that led to Creve Court Park. We went fishing, we played tennis in the park, we played in the playground. And I also remember skating in Creve Court Park on the lake. I remember the Blues came to town in 1967. The Plagers, Gary Younger, lived in Maryland Heights. We started playing street hockey. I did not play ice hockey. My boys do now. We appreciate the efforts of the Blues and the Legacy Ice Foundation in St. Louis County for bringing this to our community as a shining example of what we can do together. Five local youth hockey players that made it into the NHL, we should be proud. I have two sons who are playing youth hockey in St. Louis, one of which just went to Michigan to play in the State Games of America against all the Michigan teams. We won, we represented Missouri. I am very proud of what the Blues have accomplished and started in 1967, when I was a boy in Maryland Heights, and where they're taking the region today. I look forward to my boys skating in Creve Court Park again. We should all stand in support of the recreation project in Creve Court Park. Thank you.
Next speaker is John Rannie, followed by Jim Herman.
Thank you, council members. Mr. Chairman, this is County Executive Steve Stanger. My name is John Rannie. I'll be brief. I come here as a coach. I grew up in the St. Louis area. I played hockey at Kirkwood, Kirkwood High School, Afton, played Clayton. When I came back to St. Louis, I started coaching because, like Jay said, hockey players give back. My nephew played in Kirkwood. I've coached on his team since he was eight years old. He now goes to Parkway South and is a player there. I coach for the Gateway Locomotives, which is now St. Louis Blues Special Hockey. I also coach for the Kirkwood Youth Hockey Organization. So I'm busy on the rinks. I can tell you that Kirkwood has a waiting list for mites because there's not enough ice space. I can tell you that our Gateway Locomotives or the St. Louis Blues Special Hockey, there's a tournament that we usually host here in October between us, Madison, and Chicago. We will not be able to have that tournament here because there's not enough ice time. We will, however, go to Chicago and play in November, and again, in Madison in February. Also, the Parkway team and other high school teams are also looking for ice time. I just wanted to share with you how badly we need ice time and how important it is for those of us that play, we all give back. So thank you very much for your time. I hope you make your decision like you first did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jim Herman, followed by Sutton Quinn.
Mr. Chairman and council members, I thank you for your time. I'm here to support the Legacy Ice Center. I think half of the speakers are from my team, so bear with me. You're going to hear a lot of things over and over again. But the Gateway Locomotives, which is now a Blues Special Hockey, got its start in January of '94 at the Brentwood Ice Center. That's when we first stepped on the ice, and we skated there for several years. For the past 10 years, whenever the ice zone opened up, we were able to get ice there on weekends, which we needed badly because we couldn't get it when we first started. We had to do Monday afternoons, which the ice was available. We had to wait for the rink, the ice zone, to actually open up, and we got on board when it first opened up. The team is made up of pretty much youth and adults with some type of intellectual disability. Most of them are youth and adults with some level of autism. The next biggest group is players with Down Syndrome. And against, we have, our youngest is eight years old, our oldest is 48 years old. We have males, females. We actually had a married husband and wife team who retired a couple of years ago. But these players, because of their disability, because of, especially the autistic children, they need a systematic schedule. They have tunnel vision. And when you take them out of their routine, it's upsetting for them, especially for the young ones. So it's important for us that we have the ability to be able to practice pretty much the same time every week. And starting last year, we struggled with that. And to this day, our season starts in less than three weeks. And I still do not have a schedule from the ice zone for when we're going to practice because he's having such a difficult time. For the past four years, we've invited Chicago teams and Madison teams to come to St. Louis to play games. I have been told that that won't happen. I had to call the teams and cancel it. They're now asking me, I got a call just before the meeting started from the head coach in Chicago. He wants us to drive up to Springfield, Illinois on that weekend, and they would drive down from Chicago, and we meet and play games in Springfield. So that's the importance of available ice. Real quickly, I also work for the National Hockey League, I have for the past 20 years. There was an unprecedented event here two years ago during the National Hockey League draft where five players from the city of St. Louis were drafted in the first round. That has never happened in the history of the National Hockey League.
That's three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Can you wrap up for us?
Yeah, real quick. And it really put St. Louis on the international hockey map. And that would have never happened unless these young men had the opportunity to have the available ice to hone their skills and their game. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Sutton Quinn, followed by Patty. And, Mr. Chair, I can't read the last name, it starts with an S.
Hi, my name is Sutton, and I'm a synchronized figure skater on St. Louis Synergy. My club has around 200 people, and we practice 10 hours a week, and that means we need a lot of ice time. Last year, my team placed sixth at regionals and 12th at nationals in Michigan. We've gone so many places across the US, including Minnesota, North Dakota, Portland, and many more. It would be really cool to have nationals or regionals in St. Louis. I really hope we can build this ice complex for all the teams in St. Louis. Thank you.
Thank you, Sutton. Well done.